Whopper fries.
I'll take Coke, please.
We'll get the preliminaries out of the way right now. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the rolls, please?
Sure, I'll do the board members first. Schmuckel?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Barchef?
Here.
Dool? He's not here. Augustineelli?
Absent.
She's not here. McManus?
Here.
And Corn?
Here.
And now Planning Commissioners Racine?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
And Klein?
Here.
And it's noted that De Good is absent.
First item on our agenda is public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to the board, please come to the podium. And perhaps, John, if you could provide a microphone. Is there? Okay, good.
My name is Justin Reed, 63, Cuyahoga Drive, Apartment 1B. I am not a Garfield Township resident. Instead, I'm a Traverse City resident. Even though I don't live in Garfield Township, I am a I use the Mall Trail quite often from the Traverse City Limits up to the Mall. And the maintenance of that portion of the trail is terrible. I cannot get an answer from TART trails. I've talked to them, they said, well, it's the Garfield, it's the road commission's responsibility, and then it's not the road commission's responsibility. Then I've talked to MDOT and that says, well, it's not our responsibility, it's Garfield Township's responsibility. So within the me asking, I keep on getting the runaround. And I'm just curious about whose responsibility is it to to maintain that trail? That goes from Airport Alley to Traverse City Limits.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? I would take a motion from either board to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments?
Is it one vote or two?
This is one vote on this one. One agenda. No questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you. Now, the approval of the minutes, the Township Board, review and approval of the February 14th, 2023 meeting minutes. Any alterations suggested? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have motion and support. Any questions or comments? For the board members, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. John, do you want to handle those Planning Commission meetings? Sure. The next item on the agenda is a review and potential approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission's February 8th meeting. Do any Planning Commissioners suggest any modifications to those?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carried, too. Okay. We will move on to item four, business. And with your permission, I will flip the order of business, and we will entertain the road commission report first. There are no objections? No objections. Very good.
One of them, I know Chuck already has a copy of in this one. But the other one is a new map that we've just come out with that is specifically for your township. So first thing I want to do is introduce myself. I'm Brad Kluchinski, I'm the manager of the road commission. This is Joe Underwood, he's your township rep. And he is also, filling in, sorry, filling in for him. But he is also our chairman of our board right now. So we got a lot of things changing at the road commission, and some of them are directly designed to help the townships kind of navigate how we work. So one of the things we've come out with here is we have a new application online that allows you as township members to view what's happening in the roads and what you have for your road conditions within your township. This map here shows everything we have selected so far for this year. We do have some availability, if there are any township projects that are interested in being added. I think we have one that we're working actively on with right now. And so there are other, some other availability throughout the summer that we could add in, other township projects if they come up. One of the things that this is what we're working for is to have eventually a five-year plan. And that five-year plan will be three solid years of projects plus an additional two years that are kind of like, okay, we realize things may change, but they're kind of where we look at going in the near future. The second map we have here is the biggest change that we have. And it's a little hard to see because of the nature of the application. But what happened was, as we started moving forward, we had to follow an asset management plan that was approved by the state of Michigan and the Asset Management Council. And that asset management plan requires us to follow best practices and to have at least 85 to 90 percent of our primary roads in good and fair condition before we start spending any serious amount of MTF funds, which is your registration and your gas taxes on local roads. So we have reached that point now. And as part of that, what we've done is we have said, okay, the red road that you have going through, that's 31, that's the state trunk line. There's no responsibility for either of us on that. You have 35.67 miles of primary. Those are the ones that we've always been responsible for. And then recently, we've added this 12.98 miles. And that is our local roads that are considered local throughs. Now, what these are, these are roads that function very close to what a primary would function at. But they aren't qualified by the state of Michigan to be a primary. State of Michigan allows no more than one-third primary to two-thirds local. It's not written anywhere, but everybody in the state knows it. So we can only have these maximum number of primary roads. But we realize a lot of these roads are currently functioning very similar. So we have roads, Lake Barney Road here, Zimmerman, and we've got another couple down in here. So these are all roads that are functioning like the primaries. And now we have decided, as the road commission, because we have reached that level with the primaries, we are going to take on 100 percent of the responsibility for those roads. So you're taking 13 miles out of what your participation agreement would have been for roads within the county. After that, we come to our standard locals. The standard locals are 10.3 miles. That 10.3 miles are the ones that we have as a cost-sharing program. The cost-sharing you receive from us comes to you, and you can accrue up to four years, three years plus the current. And if you decide you want to do a project, you can match up to 50 percent of the cost of that project with that matching funds that we're contributing to you. So the way our system works then is, if you say, okay, I want to do this road, it's going to be $250,000. You're going to have $125,000 that you can put in from us, and then you would have to come up with the other 125 to cover those through locals. And those are the busier local, or more of like collectors from subdivisions, not the real busy locals that are considered through roads. Then the next group that we have, you have 40.6 miles of subdivision roads. So the way the cost-sharing program now works for the road commission is, if you decide you want to do an SAD, the road commission will do all soft costs. So we will take care of the design, the bidding, the construction inspection, the award of the contract, the testing, the documentation, and closing out the contract. What we say is, at that point then, all of the actual construction costs are either the responsibility of the SAD, or the township and the SED, or if the township pays, we don't care. But that's what we will pay is the soft cost. So then your last group, which you are by far the smallest with, you have .76 miles of seasonal road in the entire township. We have roads, in some townships, we have 20 miles, 25 miles of seasonals. If you have anybody on a seasonal road, any upgrade to a seasonal road would be paid for 100 percent, all costs, to the adjacent property owners to bring it up to a better standard, or to bring it up to a county road standard. If they bring it up to a county road standard, then we will take over the plowing, and it will no longer be a seasonal road, and we'll work with them as the cost-sharing program proceeds. So that's kind of where we stand with the road portion of it. Now, we also are working on helping out with citizens interacting with us. So as part of our initiative, we've established a pretty robust GIS system. And that GIS system allows citizens to log on to our, or to get on to our website, enter the application we have there, and they can go to anywhere in the county, and they can select a spot, and they can say, okay, I have a request for service here, whether it be a pothole, a dead deer, a downed tree branch, a road washout, anything that we have to do with, slippery roads during the winter, anything that we have to do with, they can enter it. Or your front office staff, if they want to enter it for somebody that's calling them for some complaints, they can very quickly get on there, select that. If you have a phone, and you're out and about, and you have your GPS turned on, as soon as you go into this application, it's going to go right to where you are and put a dot there. You select it, and you enter these, the stats of what's happening. If you put your address, your email address, into this program, the system will automatically send you updates as to what the progress is. And they will tell you, okay, we've evaluated it. It's going to be something that's going to take a while. But all that information will be automatically sent to the person who registered the service request. When it's closed out, it'll show that it's closed out. And if there is something, it'll send it to the person. They can go and look at it. If there's something we missed, they can just add on to it. Even though it's closed, they can add on to it and say, well, this was missed. Can you still take a look at this? So that's kind of where we're moving towards so that people have more options to communicate to us. One of the other things that we are adding in our GIS system, in addition to some of this information, is we are now tracking our snow plows. We haven't got it out for all of our plows, but we have had half of our plows all winter long. And we are tracking whether or not the plow is up or down, whether or not we're spreading material or not. And also, we have information for them as far as when they went by. And what happens with the system, the system says, okay, the road commission, we came through, we plowed this road, it turns that road green to say it's in good shape. And depending on how fast the snow is falling, our foreman then set a parameter of how long it should be between times of us cycling back to hit that same road. So if they say it's a seven-hour rotation, or an eight-hour rotation, it'll divide it up, and it will slowly go from green to yellow to red. And when it gets back to red, it means that the road is no longer in great condition. So you may want to consider whether or not you're going out. But it also will tell us that we need to get back out and start doing another plowing route in that area. So that helps our drivers also, because they have a tablet in their vehicle, and they're looking at that tablet. And when they look at that tablet, they can see where their roads are going bad. And they will hit primaries continuously. Subdivisions, we may not get into. But if our goal is, and we typically meet it, is if we have up to 12 inches of snow, we can have everything cleaned up in 24 hours. So it's pretty good for us to be able to do that. If we have blowing, obviously, we have some things that we have to keep going back to. But for the most part, we are able to meet that. So that's the majority of what we have going right now. Like I say, this here application is something that the road, that the road commission and the township wants to work back and forth with. It's a communication tool. You can enter information on it that ranks what you feel this road is priority-wise. You can also enter in information as to, you know, what you think needs to happen in specific areas. If you say, hey, we've got some blind curves that need trees down, you can do that, too. And you can rank what your priorities are for resurfacing or anything else on the orange roads or on the cost-sharing roads. So we can help you, and we will help you develop your own asset management plan for roads, so you can see what it means. If you decide you want to put this into this road, what does it mean for the rest of the entire, I'm sorry, the entire township as a whole? So we run the asset management for the county, but then you guys have a big say in what we do for the townships. We want to make sure we're keeping you involved and making sure. If you're getting a lot of complaints about a road that we're not seeing, we want to know. And we want to see that in those reports back in this program to show us so that we can then decide what needs to happen in your township. If, for some reason, you don't decide that you want to participate, you don't want to use the funds that we are coming to you with, and you reach that fourth year, and you're not using them, it doesn't mean you lose it as a township. What it means is, we will take that fund, those funds, out from the oldest year, and everything else will just fall into place. But those funds will be spent by the road commission where it deems the biggest need is in Garfield Township, and we will fix certain things. It won't be big sections of road, but intersections that we know that have problems. We'll spend that money in your township to make improvements to the road system as we see it needed. So we'd rather have you involved, but if you decide you don't want to for a few years, and things build up, then we will start using that funds within your township as we know we have problems arising. So that covers most of our GIS stuff. Now, the other thing is, which I'm sure many of you have heard, we did qualify for an MPO, and Garfield Township is definitely within the urban area. So this is going to result in substantial additional funds for the road commission as we move forward.
Can we tell them the name of the MPO?
Sure, if I could remember it.
It's the Traverse City Garfield MPO.
Yes, correct. Because you guys are basically the biggest urbanized area we have. So, but we are at like 56,000 people, which means we are still at the baseline funding. So we'll get $1 million in urban funding instead of 385,000 in urban funding. And this will be limited to people who are within the MPO. So the rest of the urban area, which included, or the small urban, which included some work in Benzi and some work in Western Lelandon County, is not eligible. None of that funds are available for that. So we have the top townships coming across, all the way out to Acme, and then into Lelandon County, where we have, and I'm going to forget the second one, Bingham, Elmwood and Bingham Township, sorry. But those two are also part of that. But being that they have such a small volume of federally fundable roads, between Traverse City and the road commission, we are going to be using most of that funds annually. So that's going to mean a lot of availability for fixing corridors and dealing with some corridor issues that we know we have. There's also an additional 125,000 for expanding roads or at intersections to allow better traffic flow, and 230,000, which is available for doing studies for long-term planning. You have to do these studies in order to be eligible for grants. So what we'll be doing is, starting now, because we are eligible for far more grants as an MPO, we'll start using that money to do corridor studies throughout the county. And as we find that we have areas that need improvement or widening, we will then start applying for grants after those studies come back and say, yes, it needs to be moved from a two-lane road to a three-lane road, or from a two-lane road to a five-lane road. And as we see traffic coming from the west to get into Garfield, there are a lot of roads that are backed up every day as people try to get here, because this is where they're coming to work. So, you know, these funds are going to be a very important tool for us to be able to start taking into account the incredible rate of growth that we have here in the township. And while some of the people from MDOT think it's going to slow down in a few years, I don't see that happening. I mean, people love it up here, so they're going to keep coming. So we're going to have continuous growth, and we're going to deal with that. So the other thing is, which I'm sure most of you are well aware of, is the bridge. So we are currently working on putting together the basic information with MDOT and Federal Highway. And as we go through this process with them, we're getting everything that they want to have as we come into the beginning of the NEPA. The NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, is designed to make sure that we are using a standard of care for protected wildlife areas. So as we look at where we're moving, from the intersection of Keystone and Hammond out to Cass and Hartman, there are things that we have to take into consideration. The current plan, or first go-around on the plan, is to have a 2,200-foot bridge with only four pillars across the entire valley. So that's a very long, very expensive bridge. But in order to clear that protected area down below, it needs to be done. And we'll be at 70 feet plus over the bottom of the valley. So it's a very high bridge, very long bridge. And it will come in right at the intersection of Cass and Hartman, at which point we will most likely be putting in a roundabout there. And then we'll have a roundabout at the intersection of Hammond and Keystone, so that traffic can flow. The problem with the way the bridge has to come in, we will be coming in on a kind of like a bow as it comes down to Hammond and, or Hammond and Keystone. And so it doesn't really work well for a traffic signal, because you'd be at an offset skew to the point where you would have to have individual phases going for the traffic. You couldn't have both ways traveling at the same time. So it's probably going to be a roundabout at both ends. We do not know at this point where it's going to come out on 31. It's probably going to come out either at a southern movement of McCray, where it would come down and come out somewhere south of where the MDOT Service Center is. And it would be a straight-through road then on the south side of that. Or it could come through on the further south portion where the hill, as you come into town, you've got the large hill. There's a long, flat stretch in the middle between Silver Pines and McCray. And that is a nice, flat area where we could come out without doing massive soil disturbances and be able to bring in and put a roundabout there flat, and then have it be a three-legged temporarily. And who knows what might happen in the future if we punch a road through out to get further west and further north? We just don't know at this point, because we haven't gone to that phase yet. That's kind of the update of where we are at the road commission. I'm here for whatever questions you have. So feel free to ask if there is anything.
Robert?
If we get complaints about something on the road system, do you prefer that we just have them call your office?
They can either call us, or they can enter it onto that soft, onto that application. Either way works. It's actually faster if they enter it into the application, because when they enter it, it immediately gets forwarded by the system to the foreman. Whoever that foreman is, that's in charge of that. So if it signals, it goes to one of our engineers, and then he talks to the staff that repairs the signals. If it's a deer or whatever, it's whoever's dealing with deer that day. But it automatically gets forwarded through the system, and then it is continuously tracked from that moment on.
How does the public access the system? Is there a link on your website?
It is, right on the front page, it says, "Help me." So, yeah. And we are actually, we are very close to rolling out a brand-new website for the road commission, which will make it even more user-friendly. Because right now, the actual website itself, except for what's on the front, is kind of hard to follow.
Do you guys do anything with seasonal roads?
We plow, or we grade them twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall. State law tells us we can't touch it the rest of the time. Once November 1st comes around, we can't be out there until May. So, and that's just the nature of the seasonal road system.
I had a question about, at the beginning, you had mentioned that the road commission is going to start paying the soft costs. So is that the $1,000 we would, for special assessments that we would normally spend? Or do we still?
That is, what we come with is, we do all the engineering. So we go out, we do the survey, we do the design. We then prep it for a bid packet, we send it out to bid, we get it back. We sign, we talk to the contractors, make sure everything's okay. We take it to our board, for our board to approve it. And then, once it's approved, we move forward. Now, there's some discussion, obviously, that happens with the township.
Construction oversight's yours?
All of it, yeah. So from that moment on, you know, we take care of it. And we'll take care of dealing with things for the township as far as if it's a special assessment district. We'll make sure that all the costs and everything are accurately represented. And then we move forward from there. As we go through it, we do all of the inspection and all of the testing. And when we get all of that back together, we do an ASBIL that shows what was built, how it was built, and it's a complete documentation of that road. And then we offer them a five-year warranty. If anything fails prematurely, we take care of it. Now, on yours, if you are in a cost-share program on one of those 10 miles of local roads, once you do a rebuild, if you go into a rebuild mode, all maintenance is ours until you have to be rebuilt again. So we will take care of the cracked ceiling, the chip ceiling, and the one overlay, the structural overlay, that'll go over it. And that should extend our life from 20 to 25 years, up to 35 years, and maybe even more. So it's a long-term, so we want to make sure that, once we get it built, we want to keep it going, and that we feel like that's something we can afford as long as the millage stays in place. If the millage dies, we may have some other things. But I think people have been pretty responsive and pretty happy with what the millage has done in the past.
I think if we could, typically, we've always referred to the road commission's contribution as 25 percent.
And that's about.
And the engineering and oversight, the entire package, is roughly 25 percent. So it's close to the same thing.
Depends on, it depends on the complexity. I mean, it could be, if it's just a simple, straight road, it could be 23 percent. But if it's one that's got a lot of curves and stuff going on in it, it could be 27 percent. We don't care what it is. We're just going to cover 100 percent of those soft costs.
Okay, that makes sense. I was, I didn't know if that meant that we didn't have to pay the $1,000 anymore.
No, the $1,000 is just a jumpstart. The only reason why we have that.
To let you know we're serious, right?
Yeah, yeah. And it was because in the past, we had townships that would request 15 designs and do nothing. Not Garfield? But yeah, it's, it's basic. But, yeah, it's basically to make sure that you are at least serious about doing something.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
I see there are two signal modernizations planned in Garfield Township. What does that entail?
So we, right now, Garfield at Airport is in bad shape. Not that long ago, it was hit by a truck that had about 3 and 1/2 foot of snow on top of the truck, and the snow hit the signal and broke it off of the supports. And so the only thing holding it up was the electrical wiring. So we were able to get in there and cobble something together, but it's not long for this world. So we are going to be rebuilding that entire signal, at which point, we'll do it in a complete box span, which means we'll have four posts, and it'll go all the way around. It should make a good improvement for it. We should last 25 years on it. The second one is at Airport and Silver Lake, Airport and Silver Lake. Right now, if anybody drives out that way at all in rush hour, Airport's backed up to 31. So we are going to have two lanes going out, turning left, and then they will merge down south of there as they come through that intersection, because we need to get people clear, because, like I say, it's backed up, at least to Best Buy continuously. So for us to get that cleared, we need to do that. And the fact is, again, that intersection is very old. So it's exceeded its 25-year lifespan.
It almost looks like one of those signal improvements is here at Veterans with the star on the map.
That's possible. We're hoping to get that done. So we are looking at that one right now. We had somebody out to look at it just before the last big snow, so I don't remember how long. Was it two weeks ago, a week and a half ago? Seems like they all just blend together anymore. But, yeah, so we had somebody out looking at it, and so we're trying to get prices on that. We have a contractor that does design work for us, so they can turn it around and still get it built this summer if we can, if we determine that it needs it for sure. So.
One of the reasons we're here, we're working on our master plan, we've got to work on that this year, and I know you've mentioned there's going to maybe be roundabouts in the future at either end of the bridge, and I know they've already got some roundabouts in. I'm curious to know what, if any, other roundabouts may be going into Garfield anytime soon, and what's been your perception of how they're going, how the roundabouts are working?
Well, the next roundabout we have is for Garfield and Potter. That is a safety grant from the state of Michigan, because we've had very severe accidents out there. And we've done everything we can to repair that intersection and make it as safe as possible, and it's not enough. So we need to have a roundabout there. We actually had, in the original east-west corridor, a call for a roundabout at Hammond and Garfield, Hammond and Three Mile, but our consultant came back with it and actually looked at the data, and it's functioning well enough, especially at Three Mile, where we're now going to be adding two lanes heading through, heading westbound, going past Olson's and doing the merge after Olson's. So right now, that's the only other roundabout that we have. I will say, speaking from experience, I live out in Interlaken, and I drive that way home down Keystone every day, and it has shaved about 3 and 1/2 minutes off my commute every day. And coming in, it might shave a minute, minute and a half. So I think they work well. I think people are getting used to them, and we aren't at the point where they are downstate, where they have some even more exotic ways of dealing with traffic, where you go through different intersections and you're driving on the left side of the road until you get to the end of the crossing, and then you switch over to the right side of the road. So there's a lot of things that we are not looking at doing, because that, plowing-wise, that's a nightmare for us. But the roundabout seemed to be working well. We do have some accidents, but they're low severity accidents. And the whole idea is to prevent those, you know, side, high-speed side impact or head-on impacts, and that's what we are seeing, is that they aren't occurring. I think the ones that the state put in on 37 were a little bit small for the volume and the type of traffic they have, but it is what it is when you have a limited right-of-way. And I think they are functioning better than it was before, and especially when you put the fairgrounds there, and we've had a lot of big accidents there trying to get into the fairgrounds. So that definitely helps there. And our first roundabout, nobody really even thinks about, because probably a lot of people don't even know it exists, but it's off Lautner, south of 72. That was the first one that the Road Commission was responsible for. It was put in with the Meyer, with the two roundabouts there, but it was put in on our roads to deal with traffic in the backside of Meyer, because originally, the plan was to put in a big subdivision behind there, which I don't believe has been even really touched yet, but that's something that will happen. And then, you know, we did the Four Mile, and now we've done the last two, and we've got one more coming. And right now, that's all we have unless we can get some more safety grants. One of the ones that we are looking at, if we get another safety grant, is on Silver, West Silver Lake, at, was it Seacor? That's, yeah, Seacor, because that's another area where we have high incidence of problems, because you can't see well. And so you put that roundabout there, and it gives you a better opportunity to see traffic coming.
Many, many years ago, when I first got up here, somebody, many predecessors before you spoke to us, and is acknowledging that there were issues, challenges, problems around the Barnes, Long Lake Road, Zimmerman Road area. So it's been on the radar for eons. Any idea, if anything's likely to be happening anytime in the foreseeable future to make things easier up there?
Well, we have connected all of them to our new SCOOT system for our signals. So timing of signals is crucial. And so these are now on the SCOOT, which is, stands for the Split Cycle Offset Optimization Technique. What it means is, the system itself reacts to traffic volumes. We don't do anything. The system is a computer program that looks at what traffic's coming in, what traffic's leaving, and it changes the timing of signals to deal with how many vehicles are coming through from each direction. So that's going to make at least somewhat of a difference. In the long term, we are probably looking at, based on some of the model forecasts we've seen, that Long Lake itself needs to be widened. I mean, it's just, it's massive traffic volume continuously. It's not even just a rush hour anymore. You know, you've got, except for maybe mid-morning, the rest of the day, it's pretty busy out there. So, yes, there are some things we're talking about, and at some point, you know, after all this stuff is moved forward, you know, there is still talk with Leesland County to connect Gray and Boogie, to get something done, but then you still need a connector somewhere in there to keep it moving south. So at some point, you may see us looking at another study to figure out what's the best location with the least impact to residents to make a safe and traversable path down to, say, Airport Road or thereabouts.
Thanks.
A couple of things. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't give you a compliment first. I've noticed two signals that have really changed recently for the better, Hammond and Garfield. I don't know what you've done there recently, but it's much more reactionary to the traffic and getting through there. So whoever fixed that one, kudos. And actually, South Airport and 31, I think, has really gotten a lot better. I don't know if you've made changes recently to those signals?
We, the state did all of 31, and so we have a sensor there that reads what's happening from them, and that has made it so that we are adjusting how traffic comes down in platoons all the way through from that. And we are going to make it even better if the state of Michigan ever allows us to take over their system and tie all three of theirs, Traverse City's and ours, together.
I just noticed improvements there.
Yes, we're working on it.
A couple of things that have come up with the Planning Commission, and one was just a question that came up recently. A lot of redevelopment, the Cherrylands Center, with the Curling Center and some other things that are proposed there. There's a, there's a signal at the north entrance on Garfield that's been flashing for probably 10 years.
In front of the Curling Center.
In front of the Curling Center.
It's coming down very soon.
Okay, that was my question. Are you going to either activate that or remove it?
It's got to come down. It's not in condition to stay up. We had an evaluation done of it, and it does need to come down. So we have contractors headed this way as soon as we don't have snow in the forecast for a couple of weeks. They're going to come up, they're going to take it out completely. And then, if we decide that, yes, a signal is needed to facilitate traffic coming in and out of there, that will be a discussion between us and the private property owners in there to figure out what the best solution is.
The question came up, and I kind of forget it's even there, because you've seen it flashing for so long. Another one, and there's been a couple developments proposed that have not ever happened, I guess, to be fair. The connection, there was, there's a lot of talk about the connection between Zimmerman and Harris. And, you know, it was signaled, the entrance, it was, it was all designed for that, probably 3/4 of a mile there. Is there any, anything on the radar there to connect that? There was a lot of, a lot of talk a few years ago about that.
You're talking about the nonexistent paper road, effectively?
Yes.
That goes through there.
Right, yeah.
So at this point, we haven't got to the point where we have enough development to kind of warrant it based on the types of things, because that's something we would file for a grant for.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you start talking about taking the cost and trying to spread it on to adjacent property owners. I don't know many property owners that want to spend $100,000. So, you know, it's something we definitely need a grant on, and it's something we are looking at, we're keeping it on the radar, and once we get to the point where we have that traffic volume, and we do traffic volumes out there every two to three years. So we know we're keeping an eye on it, and once it hits that critical threshold that we can then go and apply for grants, we feel like we are pretty much in a good shape for that. And it is always going to be our road because of where it is. So we know it's just a matter of when, and we don't know, like I said, once that traffic volume hits, it'll be pushed.
Some of the plans we saw were pretty favorable. We liked the looks of what you had in mind there, just it's been quiet since probably two, three years.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
On Silver Pines Road, it shows up on your map as not being red or as being normal, but yet you have no through trucks on it. There's a no-through truck on both ends of Silver Pines. Why is that?
I would guess that was something that was agreed to between the Road Commission and Garfield Township at one point. If you're...
No, they've been there four, five years. About time you resurfaced it. I think they showed up, but you resurfaced that maybe three, four years ago?
I don't know. I've been here four. I don't remember us resurfacing at my time, so.
So anyway, that's one...
But I can look that up, and I can get back to you.
Okay. And then also, what, Hope Road, a few years ago, you made that no trucks. And is there any, any reason that it has to stay that way, or why, how can you just take a road that we're planning on using and then kick us off it?
The, the problem we have there is, during the winter, we continuously have trucks getting stuck in that, trying to get up the hill. And so we have posted it, for now at least, as no-through trucks. We are looking at other potential solutions for that, but we were kind of waiting to see, you know, how much traffic was moving to River and how much traffic was moving up to, was it, it's Fermly, sorry, Fermly, to see kind of how people were reacting with the different roundabouts we have out there. So I know that's still on our engineers' radar, but I don't know what the long-term solution is. I would guess, you know, it's something that we're probably going to be looking at, especially as we move into MPO, because at that point, we have a lot more, you know, options as far as doing some studies on it, figure out what the best solution is. So.
Thanks.
Any other questions for our road commissioners? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move on to the other item of business, and that is an update on our land use priorities for our new master plan. You got your microphone, John?
Hello? All right, we're good to go. So we just appreciate the opportunity for Planning Commission and Township Board to get together and have this joint meeting in, what I'd just like to kind of cover, there's a one-pager, both sides in your packet, is just to kind of continue some of the discussion that happened last year at this time. So back in February of 2022, when there was the last joint meeting between the board and the Planning Commission, identified some priorities for the Planning Commission to consider as part of the master plan. And so just kind of wanted to review some of those, kind of say where we're at and where are some of the next steps. So in the last year, what the focus has been of the Planning Commission is to do some information and data gathering. So we've worked to really get a better handle on what's happening within the township from looking at whether it's census data, building permit data, et cetera. And then also, there was opportunity to really engage some of the public, and one of the big activities of last year was the community survey, which really kind of gives us some good, clear direction. So when we start off looking at, last year, we talked about the importance of single-family homes and trying to promote development of those. Certainly, that resonated well with the residents in the community survey. And what will be happening this year, we're now transitioning in the Planning Commission over its next several study sessions, we'll actually be drafting components of the master plan policy. So when we look at the master plan, there'll be identifying areas where new single-family homes can be designated in the future land use map. There will also be policy in there on ways that we can look at the zoning ordinance and seeing if there's ways to, let's say, create smaller lot opportunities in certain areas, or smaller home sizes in some areas. And that will really, the master plan itself doesn't permit those. The master plan is just that guiding policy, so it's just basically instructing where those areas would be located within the township. And then it will be subsequent after the, the master plan is adopted, for the Planning Commission to work on actually amending the ordinance. So the master plan just supports the concepts and ideas. The board also talked about supporting the trails in parks, and one of the things I can just actually report today, we just got word that the Parks and Rec Master Plan was approved by the Department of Natural Resources. So that's a, kudos to the Town Board and the Parks and Rec Commission for all their work on that. But certainly, there's a good support from the community, as they mentioned in the survey, that there is need for having things like bike paths and improved parks. So that will be something, while there is the Parks and Rec Commission, there are some key pieces that are in the master plan, particularly, right now, we have a non-motorized plan that's in the master plan. That's a really, it has directly ties to the zoning ordinance, so that when there's a development, so for instance, when Meyer was redeveloped last year, based on our non-motorized plan, identified a bike path out front of their, their property. So that's why you now see, so they were going through that development process, zoning ordinance required them to make that improvement. It's now in place and is kind of fitting in with the master plan in that way. We'll also be working certainly with the Road Commission, because a lot of these are going to be included in public rights away. Public safety is something that, certainly, that was one of the top reasons why people like to live in Garfield Township. They really feel a sense of safety and security. And there are some things that the Planning Commission can work to advance those. For instance, street connectivity is really important. Sometimes we get a little pushback from some of the developments about not wanting to connect, but for emergency access to areas within our community, those street connections are very important. Last year, the, the board also mentioned about Cherrylands Center, and we've had a lot of activity in the last year regarding the Cherrylands Center. There's the, we just, as mentioned early, the Curling Center, which is up and running. I've also had a couple of new developments in there. The Big B Coffee is up and running. There was a couple that are approved that are online yet, but there's the K1 Speed Indoor Kart Racing, which is in the form, is supposed to go into the former Sears location, and then Seven Brew Coffee, which was approved as well. There's also a small commercial development that was approved just north of Wendy's as well, so that's going to see some activity. If you haven't been out to the Curling Center, definitely check it out. It's, it's really an amazing facility and what they've done. When you think about that, that was an old Kmart, you walk in there and you just, you would never recognize it. I did have a conversation with the Curling Club, the Curling Center, which owns the, the... I did have a conversation with the Curling Club, the Curling Center, which owns the entirety of the former Kmart building, so they are looking at the remaining two-thirds of that, and they have some ideas on how that will be used, and it will most likely be uses that complement the Curling Center and be additional recreational-focused types of uses. But certainly, the township did a big step in supporting that effort for that redevelopment with the support of the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan. The, the Barlow Garfield Neighborhood Plan, which was put in place to help support some of that type of redevelopment in that area, will continue, and that will be essentially kind of morphed into the actual master plan, and it will no longer be kind of a standalone plan. But other efforts to improve the east side were also identified by the, the board and the Planning Commission. We talked about the River East Recreation Area, and there's been a lot of movement on that in terms of improvement. There's stuff underway this year to include a dog, a new dog park there, bathrooms and trails and walking paths, so that, that will kind of anchor and provide some recreational amenities to the people that live on the east side of the township. But we will be looking at plans along La Frayner with, the county is looking at the reuse or the expansion or improvement of that La Frayner campus, that certainly has a, a big impact, along with some of the other residential developments that are happening along that corridor. One of the things that we had a conversation with the Road Commission a little bit last year, is we're going to do a walk of the South Airport corridor between Garfield and La Frayner and see what improvements can be made as, as development occurs there in terms of ways that there can be better driveway design and maybe some cross-access arrangements, so as that area redevelops and some of those uses change over, that there'll be a much more coordinated effort, because that seems to be one of the, the bottlenecks in that area along the South Airport corridor. But we appreciate the cooperation by the Road Commission and, and look forward to having that walkthrough. And then also, one of the things that was very important to the board and the Planning Commission discussed last year was the expansion of water and sewer system and upgrading of the system where needed. And certainly, there's some of that efforts that are going to be happening this year through the county ARPA funds that are being implied, for instance, like the extension of the water service to Long Lake. One of the things that will, when we get into the master plan discussion, is kind of talk about a, there's a provision actually in the Planning Enabling Act that allows for townships, as part of their master plan, to do a master street plan. Now, from our standpoint, it's obviously, the Road Commission is the responsibility of maintaining and improving the, the roads and streets within Garfield Township, but there is an opportunity to kind of identify where there could be some improvements that ultimately have better relationship for the operation of new development that occurs. So when we see things happening, like we've mentioned about the extension of Zimmerman Road going north of North Long Lake Road, that helps to connect a lot of the development in that particular area, particularly the areas on the west side of, of Zimmerman. We also recognize the, the impact of the Hartman-Hammond Crossing and what that means, and, and I think there's, when we hear that, there's a lot of concern about, you know, that, of what the impact in terms of land use is. Well, if we follow the, the land use plan it is currently, and if we expect to go forward in the future, that corridor is substantially different in the look and feel than, let's say, the corridor that South Airport is. Hammond Road right now, and, and those, and certain portions of Hartman have multifamily residential, there are some industrial properties, certainly along Hammond, some industrial parks, those are, provide job centers, it's not the same, doesn't have the same impact as, as retail. So it's, it's certainly a different character, and I would expect that we will probably be continuing that discussion going forward as we develop the plan this year in 2023. I think it's important that, as, as long as there is a, a well-clear plan, and, and as long as there's conformance to that plan, in support for that plan, then it will be, certainly, the land use that develops along that particular corridor will be conducive to what is desired by the township and the residents as well. And last part is just to say that we do have a, we talked with the Planning Commission, we have a schedule for this year, all the study sessions have subjects that really correspond to the outline in the master plan, so we'll be going through those on a, on a monthly basis as we go through the second meeting of the month for the study session. So I just wanted to kind of give that update as where we're at on some of those, and I don't know if the Planning Commissioners also had different comments they wanted to make regarding that.
Any, any comments, any commissioners?
I'm just happy to see that, obviously, that in the community survey, the encouragement of redevelopment of blighted properties, that eighty-seven percent of the respondents indicated that Garfield should incentivize, and I think that's great that we were able to do that and, and help out and, and find these, these retailers and also the people that want to revitalize the Cherryland Center. I think it's great.
Yeah, I would echo that, I think the, it's interesting, because some of our discussion a couple of years ago, many of the points that we touched on the community survey, let us know we weren't out of touch. So that's, that's a good feeling. I'm, I compare that to the Peninsula Township Board urging their residents to vote down the road millage the last time it was up, and they voted for it anyhow. Because I think they might be a little out of touch. I've been known to stir the pot a bit.
They don't watch our tapes, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I think that's, oh, well, good, I think I, you know, does anybody have anything that they feel is part of the discussion that we should be having tonight? It's on any topic, or? And it's, it's an open meeting, it's not, we're not stuck with an agenda. Feel free to chime in if you, Chris?
It just seems in my two years here, a lot of the public's complaints about decisions that are made, they really have an opportunity to show up at these public meetings for the master plan, planning, right, and, and speak their mind, and then they can help, like drive, like guide that. So I kind of feel like we need to make that public and let people know about that, so they can participate. So that way, later on, they're not coming and regretting or complaining about something that we've decided that follows the master plan.
Yeah, those, those study sessions that we'll have, the second meeting of the Planning Commission are certainly the ones that, those are the great opportunities, because we don't have any business on the agenda, it's just there to kind of talk about the different chapters of the, the master plan. One of the things that Steve and I were talking about with the Planning Commission that might happen later this year is to maybe do some pop-up sessions around the township, so as ideas of whether it might be something related to housing or some type of other land use, is to maybe go out to the public, whether it's at Silver Lake Park, at the dog park there, and ask people what they think about some of these ideas, would just be a good way to kind of bounce it off from people and see what their feedback, so kind of going out there to them is, is one of the ideas that we have.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. And then some people had brought up about the Barlow Corridor, making that more walkable, and I know that with the sidewalks being expanded, really helped that, but people seem to want easier access to like the tar trail, and it seems like if you lived in the Town and Country Trailer Park, you'd have to blow a, you know, a, a path through some private property. I don't know how else you could, and you and I have talked about this, you know, how do we make it more accessible for those folks who live in that area to jump on the tar trail, without maybe having to walk down to Premier and around the corner? Just easily, more accessible.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's where, at, at those places like that, I think it's where it is kind of built out, really the constraint there is, is, is the inability to make those direct connections. But we do still have the, you know, the, working with the Road Commission and the public right of way that's there. I mean, there are our, our opportunities to make some of those connections. We've been very adamant about expanding the sidewalk network where we can, we typically are utilizing that portion in our ordinance that requires as, as new investment is made that business owners, and they've been very cooperative, I think they see the value in it. It's kind of hard sometimes, because when they're not connecting directly to other sidewalk portions, it, it may not make a lot of sense, but we are getting, we are getting the connections. There was, when Gordon Foods went in there, they were very cooperative in putting in that sidewalk that extends, you know, gets us a, a little bit farther down the road.
And I think it's important to note that we went to the county on their ARPA program and asked for funds to do just that. They did not choose to fund any trail projects. But we're still working on it.
It's kind of interesting, you're talking about the master plan, and how many times we were written the master plan, but people have to understand, it's a, it's a living, breathing document, it's not set in stone, because, you know, Joe and I had this discussion a couple of times, you take roads, you know, ten years ago that weren't even paved or weren't even, they were probably seasonal roads, and now they're thoroughfares and major developments, or any school road would be an example of that, where, look at the development and what's coming there. So what the fine line you have to walk is the, you know, people, you know, people come with developments and, and want us to change the master plan, and there's still a group of people that'll use the master plan as a weapon against us, well, you can't develop because your master plan says you're not going to do that. So you have to understand, it's a, it's a document that changes, and it changes because of what we talked about, all the people that are coming here and the infrastructure change. So it's important, and I mean, every time we're done with it, we start over, I mean, basically, is what we're doing, and, and you have to, because it needs to change. So I think, you know, we, we try to do the diligence and the, but the direction also, some of these come from you guys, and what do, what do you want us to, to, to work on? What, how many times we talked about granny flats, you know, our granny flats, something that we want to consider in Garfield Township. Other, other communities are, you know, with, with housing being as, as expensive and as hard to come by, is that something we, we don't allow, I don't think, right now? Is that something, as we work on the master plan, is that something we want to consider? Those are just kind of the ideas that we need to bounce off you guys as, as, as our board to say, what do you want to see? So.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, my personal feeling on granny flats is I don't think they belong here.
Yeah, I've just thrown it out.
I do, I think they're a great idea for downtown, because, you know, typically, you know, my house right now, we got four cars, we can't fit another car. We're done. So, and there's nowhere to walk, so it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a granny flat. In the city where there, somebody could be, you know, have a granny flat on Seventh Street and walk to Front or, you know, to Tom's on Fourteenth Street, there's a, there's a lot of different locations you can walk to, but that's not so much out here. So interesting concept, but I'm not sure that it would fit.
I think Joe raises a good point, though, that housing is the elephant in the room just about every governmental body in the country, and nobody's got it figured out yet, but we've got problems in the region, and we've got to eventually do what we can to try to make housing as, we've got to try to improve it, so people that, that live here that aren't wealthy have places to live, not necessarily spending all their money on rent and not getting anywhere. So I'm sure we'll be working on that, but I think that's one of a whole bunch of different tools that may work in someplace, it may not work here, but as we start studying this more, I think Joe's point is, we probably ought to be communicating with you and getting some ideas, it would not make any sense for us to spend six months working on one potential way of addressing things if it's, if it's not going to go anywhere. So probably, instead of just meeting once a year, I'm sure we can talk, brainstorm at our level, and maybe, John, you can communicate some of what we're working with to, to the town board and, and get some back and forth and figure out what may make sense and what may not. There's, there's no magic bullet to this.
Correct. One of the things we can do is, so as I mentioned, utilizing the study sessions as kind of looking at different chapters of the master plan, one of the things that we'll do is, because we, we've had a lot of discussion by the Planning Commission last year about different aspects of the master plan. So we'll be coming with kind of draft chapters for their, for their discussion, we could share those, so basically kind of taking your packet and sharing that with the town board members, so if you got feedback as well, you know, if they say something, wow, this doesn't make any sense, or you guys missed this, or whatever, we could do that, share that packet. How I see those happening is, as those are presented in very draft form to the Planning Commission, gives it opportunity in those study sessions to have feedback and, you know, change those and, and come back then with follow-up drafts as well. So that, I think just sharing maybe the, the meeting packets with the town board members would probably be really helpful, then that way you can at least, if there's something that interests you, you know, let us know, or come to one of the meetings if it's really passionate about it or whatever, but that might be just a good way to kind of keep, keep everybody in the loop.
Yeah, you said there's no, there's no silver bullet.
I wish.
It's going to take a lot of different approaches, and some of them just don't make sense for us. It's, we've been, we've been looking at it for quite a while, and I think, you know, Garfield may be in the position of having done more than any other community in northern Michigan to bring, and I guess the word I like best is income-based housing to the community, you know? I, I hate the term affordable, because somebody afforded every house out there. It's, it's, it's just a pretty word to mask a problem. But if income-based housing is based upon, you know, if a person makes $10,000 a year, they're obviously not going to be able to pay $2,000 a month for rent. So that we, that we do, and I think we do a lot of it, but I don't know that there's a bottom on it, I don't think you can ever fill it. It's, it is, you could just keep building housing and building housing and building housing, and at some point, you run out of space and there's still going to be a need.
I think you're right, and from what I've been made aware of, I think our township has done a lot more than many others in our area. I think it's mostly rental-based stuff, though, and, and personally, I'd love to see us get some more homeownership, that's, that's more income, I don't know if you can do it income-based, but anything we can do that can make a situation such that a developer can make a buck developing something that somebody that's not wealthy can afford to buy.
Yeah.
And that's not easy.
I think the closest thing we have to that is Habitat, Habitat for Humanity Houses, which are volunteer labor donations, and then the residents themselves build sweat equity in, you know, either by working on the house or volunteering somewhere else.
But how many of those a year can you do?
Um.
I mean, in reality?
In reality, it would depend on how many people get involved. If the people, all the people who talk about wanting housing were doing something like that, we could do a lot. But the people who are talking about it that never actually do anything are, there's a lot of them, you know, they've got, they're in the paper, marching in the streets, jumping up and down, they're not building anything.
What about smaller homes and smaller lots?
That may be a tool that we ought to think about, but that's something we got to work on.
I'm just thinking, smaller homes, smaller lots, may be a way we could look at it to get more single-family homes.
It, it may, and, and it certainly wouldn't have to be something, it would have to be township-wide, maybe we just experiment with a couple of spots, see if it works or, or not, and, and learn from that.
I, I think we also need to find out, again, from our constituents, if there's a desire for ownership, but within multifamily condominiumized type units, townhouses, different ways, I, I think, I understand what you're saying, Chuck, but I think that the, the cost can be brought down from a planning standpoint, if we create opportunities for ownership within greater, within greater density of units per acre. And I think that that's part of what we're going to be feeling out as we, and we may see some of it in this year's five-year master plan cycle, it might be we're laying the groundwork for next year's master plan, five-year cycle, but what, what we need you to provide us with feedback on is, I really feel like we look at, we look at the master plan map and we see a lot of yellow, low-density, which we know, a lot of that is still farm fields, or, you know, vacant undeveloped land. And I think one of the exercises, I know you've already done some of this work, frankly, on another topic entirely, as it relates to the remaining amount on another topic entirely, as it relates to the remaining amount of industrial parkland in the township, a lot of it's occupied. And I think part of our exercise for this next year is to look at how much of our zoned and future, future planned residential is actually occupied and built out and how much of the not particularly dense that we've planned for historically, because of its near-city proximity, uh, there's going to be a great deal of pressure to respond to growth by provide, and again, keeping costs down so that people who have, trying to use your words, but, you know, to avoid affordability, but people who can use their earnings at jobs within our community to actually still live here in our community, and they don't have to drive a long ways in order to be able to take their wages and, and buy a house. So, a lot of words to say, I, I think what you're going to be hearing from us is that we're going to be looking at the lower density and asking ourselves if some of the outlying ag land is become, going to become our future low-density and some of our low-density is going to become some of our higher-density to respond to the demands of our community.
Yeah, I think East Bay has got a couple of projects that may reflect that. They have their, I think they're typically manufactured homes, but they're, you know, they're on, they're owned, they're on a lot, a small lot, and they are, um, you know, they have community facilities within the development. They've been, I think, relatively effective, you know? I've been in a few of them and they're, they're, they're comfortable, they're, I, I don't know how affordable they are, I don't know what their payments are, what they cost to purchase, but, um, that seems to be something that's working in East Bay. Uh, I don't think we've, the closest we've had to that is probably the back of King's Court where there's some.
I was just going to say that, I've just seen that today, this is me personally, affordable housing, there's a brand-new one there for $169,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, you know, your payment's going to be $700, but their lot rent is $900. So, you know, we can't do affordable housing for a $170,000 home when your lot rent is going to be more than your house payment. That's why I'm thinking with the smaller homes, even if they're manufactured and smaller lots, they own that lot and not have to pay what they're paying like at King's Court.
Hey, you're, John, you're East Bay guy, are you familiar, you're familiar with those developments? There's a new one going in on Hammond.
Wood Creek?
Is that, Wood Creek is there, that's one of the existing.
Wood Creek's an existing one, but I think it's called Alta Vista.
That's the one that's coming in now.
It's going off of Hammond, uh, kind of on the north side of Hammond, just past Olson's. Yeah, I mean, those, that's a manufactured home community and we have quite a bit of that right now in the township, uh, between Meadow Lane and Town and Country and King's Court. Um, I don't know, uh, I mean, certainly that provides one option. I don't think there's a silver bullet, there's not one that's going to work. One of the things I will say on, when we talk about, uh, some of our areas like off of Barlow, there are some smaller lots on the east side of Barlow that, some of those are actually, that's like actually a mobile home subdivision, there's single wides on lots in there. Uh, we've had people come in and wanting to do, um, let's say a duplex. So, you can, you know, be a smaller unit, but you could have something where somebody could actually build that, they could actually live on one side and rent out the other, or rent out both sides or live in, you know, sell it as, as a homeownership. The thing is, is when we look at our zoning, it doesn't work. Uh, there are some, um, they're probably not the, the, uh, the best example of a duplex, but there are some duplexes even along Boone Street there that straddles along the township city line. You wouldn't know, but they're, they're, and they're, they're pretty, uh, you know, shoehorned in there a little bit, but there is that ability to look at our zoning to accommodate those areas where we have water and sewer. We're already expecting that it's going to be somewhat dense in there and, and we can make some tweaks in there so that when those people that did request to the ability to do some, uh, duplexes in that particular area, they can actually make that happen. So, that's kind of taking some of our existing, uh, zoning ordinance language and just adjusting it to allowing that. Certainly, there are opportunities, I think, to do some newer subdivisions, uh, on smaller lots, areas that we do have the water and sewer capacity to locate those are important. Uh, I think different building types are important. Like you mentioned, Chris, the attached type of, you know, whether it's a townhome. Uh, when we were looking at, uh, the possibility of a redevelopment of, let's say, Cherryland Center where it seems like that's going into continuing a commercial development, but we thought if that were to ever, let's say if that were to be transferred into, um, uh, residential, that you could do some townhomes. And there still is that possibility of doing some townhomes where people could buy a condo essentially in that area, has a potential to connect to Woodward and some of the streets that are to the east of that area. Also, when we look at something like the Grand Traverse Mall, still a commercial, uh, development, retail primarily, but that could be other uses in there. Our district, we allow basically residential in every district except the Parks and Rec District. Now, the industrial one is limited to only live-work units, but pretty much you can do residential in all of our commercial districts to some degree, uh, whether it's as an accessory where you have, uh, residential above commercial or behind commercial. Uh, we also have commercial district housing developments. So, I always envisioned like, let's say there was some change at Grand Traverse Mall and somebody wanted to convert one of those boxes into, let's say, condos or something, it's possible. I mean, our, our ordinance to some degree, while it has some constraints, also has enormous flexibility. Um, I think what the, the biggest challenge is, is something that we don't have a lot of control of, but one of the things that we can continue to support is that ability to access to land. Uh, so, if it is the ability to do smaller lots, certainly our water and sewer system allows for density to happen. Uh, those areas where we have the, the single-family residential is not going to happen on, on well and septic, it's going to require water, sewer. So, continuing, investing in our water, sewer system, I think is important as well.
And that goes right along with the discussion we've had, and Joe brought it up, I mean, Joe's a builder as well, is, is how can that, how can we, what atmosphere can we, can we create as a township to, that a builder can come in and take a piece of land and develop it, roads, water, sewer, and provide building sites, whether they build the home or not, that's affordable? That then they can build that home and still end up in that, I'm just going to throw a number out because it's probably a number that's not realistic today because of the atmosphere, but that $300,000 and below home, that, uh, used to be $150,000 home three years ago, okay? How do you get, how do you provide that? Is, and what can the township do, uh, what can we do as a township, maybe a better way to put it, to help with that? Whether it be, you know, we allow a higher density, not, not the higher-density housing to be more, more apartment buildings. So, like people are filling apartment buildings because there aren't homes to buy. And they're, they, they don't want to rent, they don't want to pay $1,700 a month in rent, but they don't have any choice right now because there isn't a home for them to buy. So, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and it's, 1,700 is a bargain.
Uh, yeah.
Like 2,600 now is what you're looking at for a two-bedroom apartment.
But the reality is, is that they, you know, they, they want to buy, they want to buy homes.
Right.
And, and they're, they aren't here, they want to live here, they want to work here, uh, they want to make this their community. So, what are some things that we can do? And we've kicked around a lot of ideas. I threw granny flats out earlier just because Molly wasn't here and she wrigs it up quite a bit, too, so it's a while, but, uh, but I mean, it's, it's density. So, you take a, a piece of property right now that we require one-acre building sites. Well, if you, you know, one to three, well, maybe if that's a higher density, that's four to six or something, not for apartment density but for home density. You know, maybe they're sacrifice a little of their front yard to have a home, you know? Is, is the township able or willing to, to cost-share in the infrastructure, the water, sewer and roads, or not? I don't know. I'm just asking that question because we, that is a way we can make the lot, the building site more affordable, okay? Maybe it's far-fetched, I don't know. Uh, but those are just things that, because we, ultimately, the, the conversation we hear and the demand is for that single-family home in our community. So, um, the decisions we make today is going to influence that for the next three, five, 10 years on what's available here, so. That's, that's where a lot of our conversations.
Chloe.
I guess for John or whoever, but I'm just thinking about traditions and how, um, the developer there has been able to.
Steve Zikrysek?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't want to try to say his last name, but he's tried to, or he seems to have somehow been able to provide us with most of our single-family homes. And that's a PUD, right? So, what makes his project doable, I guess? Why, how, I guess what sets him apart? How come he's able to do it when no one else is, I guess, is my question.
Well, one of the things I think was probably worked really well is that that PUD was originally established, I can't recall, maybe around 2000 or so, uh, early 2000s, so it's, and it wasn't, uh, really developing. And I think he, I, I don't know for certain, but my guess is at that point, his ability to acquire that land was probably reasonable. Uh, it is serviced by water and sewer, so he is able to do, and it was already, already planned out for smaller lots.
And roads and utilities.
Right, so I think he had access to something that was, uh, wasn't performing well and he was able to come in there and access and acquire those, uh, and essentially build out what was originally intended to be there. He's also, that's the same thing where he's looking at Birmley Estates and, and while, uh, you know, that was just approved, is basically, it was approved a long time ago, or at least the concept was approved, uh, maybe it wasn't formally approved, but the idea was that there was going to be, uh, homes going into that particular area. The other one that's kind of stalled as well is Ashland Park. That one is, is, uh, right now, that was all kind of approved, turned over to duplexes, but there's a lot of residential that could go in there. Uh, that one is kind of slow, so I'm not sure what, what that is. Part of it is, you know, is there a builder out there? Uh, you know, Steve Zikrysek is kind of a self-motivated person that took advantage of it. Uh, I do see that area, uh, as well on the east side of Garfield, too, as potential for some single-family around there. I know there's some, uh, constraints related to water and sewer to serve that area, but that certainly can be done with as new investment as made. Uh, but I think for him, it was, a, a part of that was taking advantage of that existing development, probably his land costs were a little bit more reasonable. Um, it is a little bit farther out as well and, and that's the thing, is, as you go closer into the city or certain desired areas, your, your land costs go up.
And I think it's interesting to look at the history of that parcel. Back in 2008, when I first came into this office, I drove out there to look at it and they had a big sign up that talked about a walkable community in the middle of a cornfield, and they were going to build all these two-story townhouses right next to each other on small lots. And there was one built and a whole bunch of empty land, because nobody wanted to buy there and do that.
Is that a property yet?
It's behind Ashland Park.
Okay, okay, thank you. I thought it was, but.
But it was, it was almost comical when you, you know, saw this sign announcing this walkable community with these two-story walk-ups. Um, but, you know, they built a model, maybe one or two others, and it was, for years and years and years, it just sat. And the old adage, the second mouse gets the cheese, well, that's Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Because he came in and he said, I got a little different plan. I'm going to, you know, I'm going to stay with the small lots, but I'm going to build a single floor, I'm going to make them as, you know, tight and comfortable and inexpensive as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he's been going at it. I mean, he just keeps cranking out houses.
Yeah, because that's kind of what I think of, I guess, when I've thought about smaller lots and smaller homes would be like those lots in Traditions as the example in my mind. So, um, is that kind of what the Planning Commission is thinking, like a lot size? I'm just trying to picture it, I guess, because then you guys were talking about, you know, modular homes and more trailer parks and stuff. I would like to see more of like the Traditions type.
I don't think any of us on the Planning Commission said modular or trailer park homes. You didn't hear that from us.
Okay.
I think you're, it's a good question, but I think you're ahead of us. We don't know what we're, we're thinking, that's what we're going to be working on next year.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking, Traditions seems to be a good model for what works and offers, you know, I don't know how affordable they are right now, but if they have the smaller homes and the smaller lot sizes, that might be just a good example to look at, is what I'm thinking in my mind, but.
The variable we can't reproduce is a community that was started and then abandoned.
Yeah.
You know, the roads, the gas, the electric.
I, I think that, um, part, it's, it's interesting how that's evolved, and I think we need to look maybe more broadly at, you know, you said 2008.
Right.
I mean, in 2008, the real estate market tanked.
Yeah.
And so, I think that a significant amount of that, uh, the growth, as you said, we had a developer who moved in Traditions, changed the model, uh, and in a time also when interest rates dropped and what homes there were, and I stress what homes there were, became very valuable over the last couple of years. Now, we've kind of stalled out because of higher interest rates. And so, you know, as a Planning Commission, I think we're looking at getting feedback on what are the, and I really like what you're saying, I, I think we'll definitely take a closer look at Traditions. Um, but I think that there's a, a desire on this commission to, um, not necessarily assign one solution, uh, or, or one, one tool to, to provide all the solutions. Um, and, you know, the continued feedback that we get from you on, um, on all the different ways we can go about creating, uh, and I certainly think that there's absolutely no reason to limit, eliminate the opportunity for somebody to be able to come in and buy a couple acres and have more of a, dare I say the word, estate size, you know? We, we still want to be able to have somebody be able to come into our community and build that kind of house. Um, but, you know, I, I, I think what the, the numbers will show is that we need more dense housing to create more, to drive down costs a little bit. And again, I, I think what I'm hearing from everybody is single-family ownership, um, but some of that single-family, I, I, I want to stress that I believe that single-family ownership can mean that you share a wall or you share a floor, that single, you can own something that maybe looks more like what people up here are used to calling an apartment building. But it's that ownership that allows somebody to buy into a two-bedroom condo and have a baby, uh, and then see their incomes increase and, uh, have a second child and move into a, um, a three-bedroom house. And we need to make sure that we're creating that opportunity for evolution, uh, and that they don't have to move out of our community somewhere else in order to be able to buy that.
I, yeah, I do think that's one of the solutions. I think that's part of the package.
Would it be possible to get the township to, um, either lower the benefits on a new development or, uh, or possibly cost-share some of the water or sewer or infrastructure with some of their extra money?
So, the water and sewer system is constructed from the users, the ratepayers, the people who built developments, put pipes in, paid benefits, put up houses, apartment complexes, they've all contributed to this system and built it up over the years. So, there's inherently a, an obligation to those people to maintain the system. Now, we can raise everybody's rates and then give people free water, except we have a ordinance that doesn't allow that. It literally says, we cannot give away water service. So, when we built the Township Hall, we had to pay benefit fees to ourselves. We came out of our general fund into our water fund. So, it's a, it, it is a, it's not out of the question, but it is problematic.
Because that's why there's no single-family lots for sale in the township anymore, because the developers can't afford to develop land and, uh, and build a subdivision. The few that have been built in the last 20 years are gobble, or they're, they're, the builder of the subdivision is building the houses on them, there's no lots for sale in, um, since I think '05 is the last one, well, with the exception of maybe over at, uh, on the west side of the township, anyway, there's very few lots for sale in any subdivisions. And that's what, somehow, we need to create a way of getting more subdivisions built with lots that we can, that a little small guy like I could buy.
Yeah.
There's, there's just nothing, there's about five or six lots out there anymore, maybe a dozen, but there's very few.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, you know, the cost of water and sewer has gone up, anything underground has gone up dramatically. Um, it was kind of the wild, wild west for a long time, but the, after the Flint debacle, they actually started paying attention. It was kind of the wild, wild west for a long time, but the, after the Flint debacle, they actually started paying attention. So it's, it's a little more expensive. It used to be cheaper to put in a water system and a sewer, and now it's kind of gone the other way.
What about the main infrastructure? Not the hookups or the rates, but the, the main line that gets you from where it ends now to point B, and then it opens up for more development. Does that fall under that same category?
That's something that we can do through bonding. So the idea there is you bond to build a main, which gets you a debt, but that'll be paid by the new people who will.
Eventually hook up.
Eventually hook up to that.
Okay, just a thought, just brainstorming.
A, a mature system will run off of its water sales alone. It doesn't need to worry about benefit fees because there's no, you know, there's no massive new infrastructure to put in. You'll update infrastructure, but you just set your water rates where they're high enough to maintain the system.
How would the true, would you say our system is?
We're not even fully grown up yet. We're teenagers, we're teenagers.
And I am hearing you say, in response to the question, there are mechanisms for the township to provide for the. Support the financing, you said bonding.
Right.
Ways where the developer doesn't have to borrow the money and then leverage it against the home sales. But ways that the township can fund, and, and those are mechanisms that are, the township's already engaged in, are there examples?
We have, we have put in, we put in a new water tank on the northwest side of town. We ran pipe from McCray Hill to there. Some of it was, some of it was just upgraded, other it was just new pipe, but it was, it was a major expense. And that came out of our capital funds.
And that provided for.
That brought a water tank to, well, Cedar Run Road, which is what we're, and that's going to connect to Long Lake and basically provide water to that whole corner of the township.
Yeah, improving reliability for the existing users and also expanding the opportunity, like you're suggesting, for future expansion, for new development.
So the area around West Senior High was basically run off of a, it's called a pressure district. So you have a pump that runs continuously to create pressure, rather than having a tank, you know, sixty or a hundred feet high that's pressurizing everything. You have this pump that constantly runs, pushing water out to give everybody the sensation that there's water flowing from, from up above. But after we built that tank, we were able to abandon that. So that's, that helps in terms of costs and it's a, you know, we're doing, we're, we'll bring a water and sewer rate study to the town board here in the very near future. Because we've done a really, really good job of keeping rates down for a long time, but we're going to have to move from those.
I don't have water, so.
Part of what's driving some of these questions is, I, I can kind of see a, and I wouldn't call it a hotbed, but, you know, an area that's going to take off, we think. Is, is the southwest corner where Olson's just came in a couple of months ago and presented a, a big plan. Now, it's, it's pretty conceptual right now, and it could affect surrounding properties around that too, but there's no water sewer there.
There is sewer.
There is sewer, okay. But you're going to need water and sewer, whether it be the commercial, whether it be the industrial, whether it be the residential, or the neighboring residential, you need water and sewer there, so.
Correct.
You know, that's, that's an area that's, that's void of that, and it's probably an area that's going to develop potentially quickly.
So that's another area where we asked the county board for some ARPA money to get, you know, put a nice pump down there and a big pipe that would come up to that property. They did not see fit to award that grant. So again, we can look at the township spending capital funds or bonding for that. And then, and then having the rates, the future rates reflect those increases.
Because as we do look at the master plan, whether what we do or what we project that property will be in five years or ten years depends on the water and sewer availability. So it's kind of a doom loop almost.
Oh, what's interesting is the, you know, we had a green belt around the township at one time. And then Traverse City Area Community Schools built their, public schools built a high school way up on the west side. And then they, they paid for a water line to reach there, and they paid for the pump to essentially provide the pressure to keep the school operating with water. And that created growth all around that area. So even the best laid plans can be, can go awry when the school decides that they're not covered by zoning. We decided it was going to be a green area, they decided it was going to get developed.
Chuck, I noticed in the minutes of your last meeting, in your report, you mentioned that the township will be hosting a meeting to discuss housing.
Right.
In the area. Is that, is that taking shape yet, or is that conceptually, it's something that's going to be happening, but you don't really know what or when or when?
We had the meeting and Chris Forsythe from the county was there. And people from Blair, East Bay, the city, Garfield, of course. And the conversation was about the recent changes to, to allow townships to create. Pilts that weren't allowed before, or payment in lieu of taxes. So in the past, in order to have a pil, you, it either had to be a senior project or something that was financed through MISTHA or HUD. But now it's possible to do it without that. So it's, and it also changed some of the laws. The current law, previous law allowed the township to establish a payment in lieu of taxes and negotiate terms with the developer. This, the new laws allow the county to reject our plan if they don't like it. So in other words, they can say, well, you, you can't, you can't get out of paying your county taxes, so we're going to add our four point six, seven mils or whatever were allowed under the headly. Back onto your roll, which may or may not push the developer away. But we, we decided that the county probably wasn't going to do a lot of that right away, because they would look terrible. With everybody wanting more housing, if they were to do something that caused housing to go away, they would, they would not be popular.
Surprise, surprise.
But it is, it is, it is a changing scenario, even on a day to day basis. We keep hoping that maybe prices will go down, but hoping doesn't always work. So yeah, I think, I think you can see that we would like to expand sewer and water, we'd like to make it more available. We just, first thing we got to do is get this rate study finished up and adopted, and then from there, we will have the basis to be a little more. Aggressive in terms of that kind of growth. Then we have to decide really what kind of, as I said, we, the last meeting we had together, we talked that our big. Our first goal would be to create more single family homes, as you say, some that share a wall or a floor or a ceiling. But, you know, the idea is if you still have homeownership, that gives somebody that hedge against inflation. And instead of all the money just going out the window every month when you pay rent, you're, you're building equity. You're making something of your own. So I, I think it's a great idea. Chris?
You know, a lot of times we're just relying on developers to come to us and say, hey, I'd like to do this, right? And we check it towards our zoning and master plan. Is it, does it make sense to say, for instance, like you were talking about the Olson's property? There was discussions about running, how do we get water there for him to bring more businesses in? And at the time, I, you know, I was new on the board, I'm like, well, if the county were to invest in the infrastructure to allow him to have water. But then route it to where people on East Silver Lake Road could access it as well. So you're not just providing it for a business, you're providing it for the public to later, to tap into. So could you, just hypothetically, Rennie School Road, there's the, the field to the north. Could you put infrastructure in, change the zoning that a developer would have to build high density, single family homes? The infrastructure would be there? Or would you be wasting the money as the township running water there because you're just relying on a developer who you hope someday is going to come in there and execute that vision? You know, when I visited Arizona Glendale, they had, the builder out there just put all these cookie cutter homes into high, high density. I mean, people's lawns were basically artificial turf, you know, because they were so tiny, and they all had these pools and stuff, but they're. Their rates stacked on each other, but they were really nice homes. And, you know, you could build the homes any size that you wanted, but they're actually single family homes. If, if you build it, will they come, is what I'm getting at? If the township focused on, hey, we would like high density, single family homes to be built off a seacore in that farmland. So we're going to work on getting infrastructure out there to make it desirable for builders to build there. Do we need to be proactive that way, or do we just wait until developers come to us and say, hey, that, you know, I'd like to do this? Because I don't know how else you control what we're looking for. If, if you can't, it's the builders who control in the end. They develop it, they figure out what they want to sell the homes for. How do we control what we're looking for, I guess, is what I'm wondering, if there's a way?
Well, I'll ask Joe if he wants to be controlled when he builds a house.
I mean, but I mean, we're making a piece of, an area desirable for you. Like, you know, we're, we're setting it up with the infrastructure through bonding or whatever means we have.
Correct, and, and if everything goes well, then your investment will be.
That's it, though you can't always guarantee it's going to turn out as you planned.
Right.
Right.
Now, something like Downbligh, the Sam's Club, where there's that two hundred and some acres that's for sale, that would probably be a place, you'd want to find something that was for sale. Before you went and put a bunch of stuff into it. I mean, just running out to somebody's farm that they don't intend on selling would probably be kind of a silly idea, but as far as, if you could, something like that too, that, that's residential. That, that big large area that's for sale, if something, if you could create some water and sewer or somewhat way of cost sharing, something to get it to, to start. It's too expensive, I think, to, to do it without maybe a township cost share or something like that, because nobody seems to be moving on it.
Well, and, and I think part of it, I was just looking at the parcel that you're talking about, and that's currently zoned, one family residential. One family residential is backed up by our master plan, and so the, the sweetening of the pot. Is really to, you know, what we can do is create an opportunity for greater density. So it's not so much that the developers are in control, but they're looking at and saying, I can't, I can't build there and make money. But the planning commission has now changed the rules of how I can develop that property in a way that I can profit and bring this community the development that it needs. The other way that the pot can be sweetened, if on the trustee side, from the utility side of it, if that can also. Sweeten the deal by providing bonded utilities that help create this, create a situation where the kind of homes that we think we need become more. Got to use the word Chuck, affordable for a developer to build and put on the market. In, in a way that he can, the developer can make a profit and somebody can buy it with a mortgage they can pay for. It, it all comes down to what I was saying before. The control, the levers that we have control of are density. And the type of housing that can go on, on certain pieces of property. So we, that's, and we're going to be doing the work over the next year of perhaps changing how those levers work.
That's it, part of the mix.
And the Olson piece did have about a twenty percent residential component to it.
The back portion, yeah.
The back portion, the wooded area, so. And that was a big part of why the sewer and water was, well, all that would be. But there's some other things they need there, some, some road infrastructure. To make any of it work, they have to put a road in, you know, and I think that's the big financial hookup for them right now is, is the cost of roads going.
Well, apparently Cherry Land Earl Electric is giving them a big enough check that they can put the road in. They're moving ahead. But it is, like you said, it's kind of a, it's not a, it's not that the township is going to pave the roads and create the development areas. And it's not that, you know, we're going to jump every time a developer says, I want to build here. It's, it's a partnership, it's filled with, you know, exchanging ideas and negotiating and trying to do something that works for everybody.
If I could just add to that a little bit, so the difference, what you're experiencing down in an area like Arizona or Texas or somewhere like that, is that the demand is so high. That they are having to get, they have to work to get that infrastructure in there to support the development, because those houses are going up. Plus their standards are a little bit different. They don't have, you know, they're warm area, warm climate, they don't have some of the requirements that we have in terms of construction and so forth. But, but all developers are taking a risk, just as somebody built traditions out in the middle of nowhere and took a risk. And ultimately, it, it failed from their standpoint, and that's in the case where Steve Zikrysek was able to take advantage of that. So it's not something that a municipality wants to be involved, there's, there's ways to support development through providing infrastructure. But everything that we're doing is really, like as Chris mentioned, is just setting the rules and setting the vision and working within, and allowing for areas to occur. For the investment to take place. And there are some certain mechanisms, same thing with Cherry Land Center, that investment, that to me is investment by the community to help with that brownfield plan, to support that. So there are some small mechanisms in there to kind of facilitate that, but by and large, those, these investments in development, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential. Is really private sector investments, and we're just trying to best manage that in a way that constructs a well balanced community.
Simple, right? Simple.
Yeah, we just, we can, we can make things happen to a degree, you know, developers can make things happen to a degree. Sometimes it takes a curling club to get it off dead center. It's, and that, we, we drew up a plan, you know, for how we felt Cherry Land should be redeveloped. And they came in and said, hey, we're just going to create some rinks, and so, and they're off and running. There's, there's definitely going to be a brew pub in there.
You think about that, you look at that, the curling, if the racetrack goes in and a pub and some other, it can be a real draw, just an indoor recreational draw. And that's a great redevelopment for that area if that's what ends up happening. We didn't envision that.
Just talk about a bounce house, I don't know if you've ever taken your kids to a bounce house where you can just sit and relax for three hours while they jump up and down?
With a brew pub next door.
It's a wonderful.
Win, win.
Have it connected to the brew pubs so we can just watch through the glass.
Indoor mountain biking tracks, you know, pump tracks, that's, there's a whole bunch of different ideas swirling around out there right now. And it's not what we envisioned, but we're, we're happy.
I would say this, though, it may not be specifically what we envisioned, but I think there was a couple really important things that happened. One is the township held the line when U-Haul wanted to go in there and put in a storage facility. So that was a key piece because the township wanted activity in that location. It seemed like such a prime location, you didn't want dead space with storage units. The other part is because we did have that Barlow Garfield plan, was to know that maybe we didn't paint the picture exactly what, for them to fit in. But we did know we wanted something, activity in there, and we were open to their idea, because they were originally looking at going into the industrial park. But, you know, they said, well, what if we came and came into Kmart? And we're like, yes, that could be a magnet for other redevelopment, particularly with the investment that they were making. Really has, has kind of set the bar into the expectations now of what we see in, in the rest of that development. So there were some key things, but certainly it, it all comes down to private. So there were some key things, but certainly it, it all comes down to private in, investment in that, but certainly understanding what we want when we talk, like you just mentioned, the property behind Sam's Club is another important area, to have some vision for that because you will get development proposals.
Yeah, and we did have somebody come in and talk about 1,400 apartment units.
Excuse me?
They came in saying that they envisioned 1,400 apartment units there. We started describing some of the roadblocks, one of them being, you're going to have to build a new highway.
Yeah.
Another one being that the town board and the planning commission are not excited about more apartment complexes.
Absolutely.
So the conversation was had and they left.
It's done.
But that's, again, you, you, we, we can't always bring the right people in, sometimes we get lucky, but we can try to keep the wrong developments out. We have, and I think we have a vision, and I think it's, we're close in what we see. You know, we would, if it's a, you know, a group of duplexes or quadplexes, you know, something that again allows ownership, or if they're smaller lots, single homes in some location where that works, or if they're, you know, 20-acre lot with multimillion-dollar homes on it, that's, they're all part of the solutions. Well, hopefully it'll all click eventually. So the elephant, yeah, we've been wrestling with that elephant for a long time now. And, you know, we've actually brought down a few elephants. I think there's, East Bay is looking at some, they have some developers coming in now, we're talking about pilot programs and having some cost-based apartment complexes or income-based. So they're, they're starting the process. Blair is kind of in the middle of it right now with the developer. So there's, you know, other communities around here that want to pick up some of the load and that's good. We'd like to see more workforce housing, we'd like to see more single-family housing. And again, I'm not, if somebody wants to come in and build a, an outdoor racetrack, I'll talk to them. As long as it's not too noisy. Anything else for the good of the cause?
I assume that was our open discussion?
Yes, sir. Any other points you wanted to touch on before we?
No, we don't have anything.
All right. Very good. Mr. Klein? Anything exciting?
No.
Mr. Fudge?
I'm happy.
All right. Mr. Good?
I'm good.
Did you see the raptors today?
I, let's see now, where was I? I was coming down the hill, I had just, I had just given blood today.
Ah, good.
And I was coming down Cedar Run Road and there was an eagle right up over to the north of Cedar Run Road.
Ah.
So yes, I saw a raptor.
Nice.
There was one at lunch, too. A rotary.
Oh!
That raptor.
I saw those raptors as well, but as you well know, I was out counting up attendance.
There you go, that's right. I just wondered if you made it into the room.
Joe? First Joe.
I'm all set, thanks.
Joe McManus?
I've already talked enough tonight, so.
Me too. By the way, yesterday I got the estimate for your road.
Oh, boy.
From the road commission, so looking forward to that information to you very soon.
I gotta get one for mine. I don't have a road less anymore, so it's gone. I just don't have neighbors that want to redo it.
Chloe?
I just want to thank John and Steve because they do great work and they, when you were talking about the Park's master plan and how everyone did so much work on it, you guys did the work on it, really, you do a lot of the behind-the-scenes, so I'm thankful for you guys, you do a great job. And doing more of the community engagement, I think is great, I think that's really what, I like to see that from our planners, so thank you.
I would like to comment on that too. Steve does an awesome job for us for Parks and Market Commission meetings, absolutely. We thank you.
Mr. Barsha?
Talk plenty.
So I'll yield my time to Laney.
Okay.
I use her time up.
Isn't that normal?
It's all in the family.
All right, well, I think it's...
Well, you have public comment here, sir.
Oh, yeah. Before we adjourn, we will have public comment again. Hello.
Oh, oh.
Sure.
Mary?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Jennifer Graham with Guardia Frasier. Well, I learned a lot at the meeting today from the road commission, so I am glad that you guys did this, but I did have a couple talking points just briefly on water and sewer infrastructure. I guess from my perspective anyway, because I do work with a lot of other municipalities and personally and with staff and this, and both boards, I, I think you guys honestly are extremely above bar and extremely creative to try to make infrastructure as cost-effective and extend it where plausible realistically. I mean, everybody has that same challenge and I hear it more than anybody, how expensive it is to install the infrastructure and I see the bids, you know, and that's what we're, we struggle with and we have because it is the precedence and what every municipality has is that ownership is put on the developer. And so we try to go through quite a litigious process to ensure that when developers come in and want to extend, they're extending it to the limits of their property, they're connecting and putting looping in where feasible to ensure that that next person has less cost and they don't have to go across someone else's frontage. We are extremely diligent on, on that, aren't we Chuck? So I mean, I guess I want you guys to be aware of that, we also are very creative to try to find grants and funding opportunities through our capital improvement projects to extend infrastructure such as Cedar Run to Long Lake. I mean, I'm very proud of that work that we've all done to open up that corridor on a, even when our survey crews were out there, we were having property owners coming out wanting to know why we were out there, what was happening, because there was such an interest with those stubbed roads of having access to municipal water and opening it up to them. So definitely building it and they're going to connect, but we do, we have some, you know, challenges because it is a precedence. I mean, paying for infrastructure for future developments, you know, the past ones that have paid for that is a struggle we have because that is, you know, how it's set up. But I mean, there are some possibilities, and I've had this discussion with Supervisor Corn, of some things that we could potentially look at in the ordinance right now, like sewer, for example, if you're within 200 feet, you're mandated to extend and connect. There's possibilities to do that with the water side, impose that, set up, you know, service corridors in districts, for example. If you're in the city of Traverse City, I mean, they don't allow for wells, they don't, not even for irrigation. And I'm not suggesting that because, you know, that can be a deal breaker too for people because that's definitely an option that our residents all have in Garfield Township, is if they don't want to put that infrastructure in and make that investment, they can still do a drain field, they can still put, you know, a drinking water well in. So there's, there's definitely some things that we can work through, but I guess I just wanted you guys to know that, no, I mean, in comparison to a lot of the municipalities that I work with, you guys are extremely collaborative and creative to try to make it as cost-effective, providing funding through the lateral charge process, the special assessment to make that more, less of a burden for the property owners. So anyway, I'm, as always, at your disposal, so.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Mrs. Graham? And that is, oh, we have another speaker.
Really quick. Hi, everybody, is this on?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Not yet.
Can you hear me now?
No. Hello?
Yep, there you are.
Really loud now, okay. My name's Hunter Lumsen, I'm the homeless program supervisor with NMCAA in the, you know, for Greater Grand Traverse County. I'm here with one of my coworkers, Jenna McQueer, and we're also fair state and students in social work, the social work program, master social workers. And we're in an advocacy and policy class, so we are learning about policy change and trying to pick a policy in the area to try to change it or make it better. And we have decided to work on the anti-camping ordinance in Garfield Township when it comes to the homeless population in the area. And I don't want to take up too much of your time talking about that, but I was curious if anyone had like 10 minutes of their time sometime this week to have a short interview with us on the phone? Would anybody be interested in that?
Supervisor would.
I sent an email, but I didn't hear back.
Typically, we don't answer questions in the comment group, but I'll talk.
Would you, okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
He loves me.
I've been voluntold.
I do have a question, the gentleman that brought up about the trail, is that something that we could look into?
We've looked into it in the past.
Okay.
So the trail was built by Tartt, who has maintained it as far as keeping it open in the wintertime.
Okay.
In terms of the maintenance of the trail as it, as it's degrading, I guess, I don't know, I'll have to go back and see if I can find out what was, who built it and what was set up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I know at one time the state plow trucks were going by so fast that right after Tartt had plowed the trail, plow trucks would fill it back up. I argued with the MDOT over that, they probably slowed down a little bit.
Well, thanks, I appreciate you looking into that.
So my name's Justin Reed. So my thing is also Frankie Road. Frankie Road behind Myers is, is pretty degraded. I know it's a, not a primary road, the road commission classifies that as a local road. So there's more of a cost share with the Garfield Township than it is the county road commission. So I guess when they're talking about use of funds, that would be something I guess we looked at, is the Frankie Road, because it's pretty bumpy back there and I know the new Mauser School that's going in there behind Myers, is that is going to increase traffic a little bit more too. So maybe that can be looked in also, talking about, you know, surfaces, that is pretty, pretty up there. And I guess to respond to the question about the maintenance with the, with the Maure Trail, that is much of a, you know, the surface is pretty degraded there too, so, but thank you for your response, I appreciate that. Even though I'm not, even though I'm not taxpayer in Garfield Township, you know, I live in Traverse City, but I still, you know, ride the beta bus and I still use the, you know, the Maure Trail, so.
Thank you. And I think if you look at your maps, you'll notice that that road has been changed and it is now the road commission's responsibility.
Frankie is?
Yeah, so they are going to take care of Frankie.
Okay.
It appears to be on the map for maintenance, that's what we were just referring about, there's a, at least a crack seal proposed for it on the 2023.
There's a lot more than that.
Good, I hope so, because we were thinking crack seal's not quite going to cut it.
Well, with the, with the construction at Meyer and the construction at school, that road really took a beating in the last two years. I mean, it's been just getting destroyed.
It's not been pretty for a long time.
You're, you're right, but it's, it's really accelerated with that school construction and with that Meyer.
But that's one of the local roads that they were able to add now that they've hit their goal on the primaries. So that's good news. And?
I wish you'd adjourn.
If there are no objections, we are adjourned.